Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, December 16th, 2021 Board of Education meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. Roll call?
Chairman Papa Holzer, Vice Chair Anafrio.
Here.
Secretary Sienna.
Here.
General Salma.
Here.
Zachary Canada.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
Salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, are there any visitors' comments limited to the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Savicino, go ahead.
I'm standing over here.
Yep, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
I was standing right there. And my comments don't really fit too good in the board. And first of all, I'd like to remember all the entities working in the Board of Education. I haven't been here for a couple of years, and obviously because as a student, new people have had their challenges and events and calls, and I commend them. Another reason I'm here tonight, if there are any people passing along the story. Yeah, a little bit ago, it was Veterans Day, and you guys always did a good job for Veterans Day. I tuned in last month's meeting just to see what was done, if anything. And it was pleasant when you found out that you did do something. And of course, I found that the next day was a little picture in the sound. One of our veterans is here to accept it for a big thank you card. And it says, Gary Jersey Yankee, from high school. And our meeting, which was two weeks ago, we brought the thank you cards in, and they're in the picture. We took it with the rest of our veterans on the way. So it's a nice big thank you for what you do every year. Unfortunately, the last two years, it's been sort of uncontained. I know Mr. Canada, at the end of last month's meeting, sort of struck up a conversation with what the other, besides the high school, what the other classes did. And unfortunately, because of audio, I didn't catch it all, but I know everybody did. So again, thank you very much. Down the road, we're only nine guys in that picture there, so we're not going to have enough exposure. And we'll try to figure out something, even if we have to bring it back next year. So I'm going to give that to Mr. Stoffel, so he gets the picture back to Chris around the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savicino.
We are looking, hopefully, next year to get back to having all the veterans back in the schools, starting off and doing the breakfast and the lunch, and having the veterans committed such a special time. It's the most important thing we do to honor our veterans. You mentioned Mr. Canada, who served in the armed forces. I have a son who's a Marine, so I can't thank you enough. So we're...
Thank you again. I myself used to like to go to Jerome Harrison, the guy from school, to the high school, and get the veterans both cooking for me.
You don't have to eat dinner that night. You're starting right after you go to lunch. That's an easy night, right?
I look like I'm listening here.
No, I wasn't going there.
Merry Christmas, happy New Year, and go Michigan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get it?
Okay. McKenna, it's all yours. Oh, McKenna, it's all yours, sorry, McKenna.
Today, I'm the only one here because we already had a basketball game. But we have three nice announcements. Students in each grade were provided store recognition awards on November 24th during the shortened school day prior to Thanksgiving. Peer nominations were used to identify the recipients. Students were provided letters with MBHS personnel visiting classrooms to present the students with their letters in the presence of staff and students. Next up, throughout Connecticut, high school winter sports started the week of November 29th. For MBHS, this includes girls' and boys' basketball, ice hockey, a team member participating on the girls' hockey team at Hand and High, co-op boys' swimming, indoor track, and under the CIAC umbrella of student activities, fencing. Lastly, we have the MBHS Winter Concert took place last night, December 15th, with staggering performances for the instrumental and choral groups. Parents and family members were allowed to attend on a limited basis, with ticket requests and seating arrangements completed prior to the event. Mr. Philippies and Ms. Burtay organized the event under the direction of Music Department Chair Missel.
Very nice. So who do we co-op with for swimming? Do we do Bramford or North Haven?
This season, it's North Haven.
Okay. Nice. Thank you.
Do you know any swimmers in North Haven?
I do know. This is a boys' season this season, and we actually have a female in North Haven that's co-op. It's the only sport that a female participates, a female-based sport during the fall season. They compete swimmer during the swimming season, the boys swim.
She does volleyball. Oh, that's interesting. Oh, that's... So she's the only female on the boy team?
I'm not conjecture roster, but from our school.
Wow.
She participates in volleyball for fall.
So she plays volleyball.
That's cool. Yeah, very nice.
Great opportunity. And we thank North Haven for allowing us to call one with them. Kudos.
Thank you. You're free to go, McKenna. I'm sure you've got stuff to do.
Bye, McKenna.
Tell me happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. This is the first time we're using the consent agenda. So it still has everything, as you see, broken down. It's just one motion as opposed to all the individual motions. But if there's ever anything that you want pulled out of consent agenda for whatever reason, then you just say so, and we'll do that.
Motion at the end?
No, the motion can go now, and all this will get approved. So here's... Oh, you mean to pull it out?
Right.
We will pull it out now because there's a motion right here to approve the consent agenda. The December 16th, 2021 Board of Education meeting has submitted. So once that's motioned, motion's made second, voted on, it's done. So if there's anything anybody wanted to pull out, you do it now. Otherwise, I won't entertain a motion.
Do you have to say it's...
No, because it's posted.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the December 16th, 2021 Board of Education meeting has submitted.
Any discussion? Want to ask any questions about any of it? Feel free.
Right, so we've approved in minutes as well?
Yeah.
Right?
Approved in minutes.
We're pretty much approving A to G, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So that's also Zach to permanent project, Beth to permanent project, Shawna as the alternate, Zach to pension, and then Beth to pension, because those have to be voted on and then sent to the town council for approval.
And those are the ones you forgot to last week, right?
Correct. We placed everybody out of committees, but we didn't actually make a motion.
Okay.
Then we'll do a roll call there.
Sure. Vice Chair Anafrio.
Yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
General Salma.
Yes.
And Zachary Canada.
Yes.
Okay. That's super tenets report.
Okay, thank you. And not that I want to go back in the agenda, but I do want to thank Jerome Harrison PTO for their generous donation for a rock climbing wall that will be installed...
February?
When?
In February.
February. Okay, and all of the youngsters will have the opportunity similar to what the middle school does with the climbing, low climbing wall there at the building. So that's great for the kids. The board briefs are there. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to either send them to us or ask the administrators. We're obviously very busy at this time of the year leading up to the holiday break. There's been a number of external things that have happened. I keep you informed with events that rise to the level of something I want you to be aware of. And I sent you an updated letter that went to all parents regarding a national TikTok situation that unfortunately has caused a great deal of emotion throughout the country. I think we did a nice job cooperating with our local police, our security teams, and what we're going to do. I'm not really going to go into a lot of detail, but I assure you that the communication has been strong, and we've been really proactive with how we're handling this. So if there's no questions on that, I'll keep moving. The school calendar is also attached. We made a couple of adjustments with the calendar because we thought that we were going to have to adjust around the high school building project, but we did not have to. So that gets us back into school early next year on the 30th. That gets us out earlier next year as well. So I think that's a good thing. So I'll need a motion to accept that calendar from the board.
I want to make a motion to approve the 2020 school.
Okay, any discussion?
Is that a typical calendar?
Yes, yes, that's pretty much our norm.
It satisfies.
The kids start on a Wednesday, so it gives them usually three days to adjust. And then the following week is Labor Day, so they get a four-day week. So it just sort of breaks them in. And we usually do those two professional development days in November because we're off for Election Day. So rather than bringing the kids in on Monday, then out on Tuesday, we just do professional development, give the kids a long weekend.
We did that this year, right?
Yep, so it's just pretty much the norm of what we do. February, we used to have a full week break, but we went back to a long weekend, which seems to work out better because if you have a tough winter and it feels like you're out of school one day every week because of snow, so they really need to be out in February, and we have a full break in April. We're out June 9th. That's really nice.
Well, no case.
Well, yeah, that's true. That's true. So it is typical. Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Vaughn now for the financial report.
Thank you. So did you hand the packets out? You'll notice the first page is a draft version of our budget calendar for 2223, so we're at that time of year again already. The dates in blue are the dates that I want you to look at tonight. And I did not put a time down. I figured the best would be to have you decide the time, what fits best with everyone's schedules. This calendar does follow the template that we've been using for the past few years.
So I just started looking at the calendar. February 3rd would be a Thursday, and the 9th would be Wednesday, and then somewhere between the 10th and the 16th. Don't we usually like pick a date between the 10th and the 16th and have it just in case? Because as time goes on, people's calendars fill up, and then this one couldn't make it, or that one couldn't make it. Do you think we should pick a date so people can plan around that, and then if it gets canceled, it's a bonus for us? Yeah, what if it snows this day? You know what I mean? So but to just say between February 10th and 16th...
As needed.
By the time we need... I know, but by the time we may need it, it might be too late to pick a night where it can be, you know, where it works for everybody. So I think we should probably do it now, and then people can plan around it. Like I said, if it gets canceled and we don't need it, that's a bonus.
Fine.
The 6th, the next?
No.
But it gets to be a...
Do it when?
The 6th.
The 7th?
Oh, sorry, 7th.
Yeah.
Are you looking at a date between the 10th and the 16th?
Yes, a date between the 10th and the 16th.
Sorry, Monday, we're talking right after here, February 6th?
Yep, no, 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 no. This one we're going to do.
Yes.
Okay, then this one's if needed, and this is an as needed, if needed. So but to have a whole week there, you know, by the time we get to possibly need that, people are going to have their schedules booked. So if we pick a date now...
Why, we think we want it to go following week rather than do it beginning? So like instead of the 10th and 11th, which is a Friday anyway, maybe the 15th, which is a Tuesday or a Wednesday?
Is there a town council meeting on 15th and 16th?
First and third, that would be a town council meeting.
Oh.
Do we need to avoid that, though?
I'm siding.
Preliminary like that, we don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, we wouldn't bring it to them, yeah.
I don't know. I didn't have to present anything else that was necessary to allow them to see.
No, because we'll present everything in one time.
Yeah, because then we have to go present it to them. So I mean, if you want to do it the 16th, that's fine with me. The 15th and the 16th, what works for you guys?
Yeah. Oh, great, because you have your seats.
That's the standard meeting for a project.
Yes, we do decide when the 15th goes.
What if we do the 15th, and we have to do another Sunday?
Okay, so do you want a pencil in the 15th and the 16th? Just in case. And then they get canceled, they get canceled. That's the bottom line. That's why you're confusing yourself. That's the next year's school calendar.
Yeah. So both February 15th and the 16th?
Mm-hmm. We'll have those as backups.
Okay. Do you want to set a time now, or do you want to...
Yeah, let's set a time.
Okay.
I'm flexible.
Shawna, was like, she said later is normally better, or I don't remember. It's changed.
And I know you have a timer. So what works?
7 is the...
7, and 7 works for Shawna. Okay, so we can do 7 on the 3rd, the 9th if needed, and the 15th and 16th if needed.
The 9th is just an admin council meeting, so that does not involve the board.
So just... Put it in blue.
Just so you realize that.
Okay. All right, so we'll cross that one off. Perfect. So we've got the 3rd, the 15th, and the 16th all at 7. Does that work?
Okay. Good, thank you. Moving on to the finance.
Correct. We did one just in case it's... Okay, sorry, Mark.
That's okay, no problem. Okay. The finance report, really not much new things to report on this time. The implementation of the new financial system is ongoing. We have actually have a full, complete crosswalk of the chart of accounts now from the old financial system to the new financial system. It has been uploaded into the new program in what they're basically calling a sandbox version, where we can go in and test things and have our trainer walk us through the different modules. We are actually now in the process of going through all our accounts payable vendors, reviewing them, making any necessary changes, putting them into a spreadsheet, and then we're going to provide those to the financial system company, and they'll be uploaded into the system. We're trying to limit and clean the amount of data that we're putting into the new system to avoid...
That makes sense.
Some of the inconsistencies and errors that we're seeing now. Gym floor, the materials have been ordered, but they have not all been received. So once they've been received, the work will start. They'll be able to schedule and start the new floor. We will begin a discussion to see if we can extend our contract with our current transportation vendor, hopefully next week. And so we'll keep you posted on our progress with that.
Perfect.
As you just saw in the draft version of the budget calendar, all buildings and departments need to have their 2223 budget requests into our current financial system by January 4th. So it's really going to start to pick up steam now, this whole process. Our current year budget for 2122, right now, the district is in a positive position, so that's great, of course. Not much different from last month. The health insurance line continues to decrease in the overage. So what happens is we budget for what we believe our district contribution is going to be for the year, and then as the employees contribute on a bi-weekly basis to their health insurance, we get those premiums, and we apply them to the overage, and then so by the end of the year, that should be at a zero.
Do we ever have a problem with the health insurance? Well, I mean, it's only what, your second or third year? But as far as budgeting, let's just say you budget for X amount of people to have buyouts, and then people don't have buyouts. Do we run into that problem a lot?
I haven't seen that type of an issue so far in my tenure here.
We've eliminated a lot of the bio-language contraction.
Yeah, we've cleaned up a lot so that we know, we have a better idea of who to count on to have the buyout. We're requiring annual forms now that the contract states they should have been electing for the buyout.
Okay.
And we also keep spreadsheets of, you know, who has family, single, and two-person coverage, and try and calculate out what we think we're going to get for those contributions.
Okay.
You know, to make it all work.
Perfect.
As I said last month, the workman's comp came in higher than what we had anticipated, so that will be a budget transfer that I will need to do. I had hoped to have budget transfers for this meeting, but with the trainings for the new financial system and a few other things that came to light, I just didn't get to it, so I will have that for you next month. The tent rental under Object 440, that is the tents that we are renting for the outdoor spaces, that wasn't budgeted for last year in our general fund. It was actually covered by the cost of a grant, so I will need to transfer money into that line to cover that. No change in the building improvement. Most of the bauger house repairs have been covered through the Fund 25, and the equipment, I don't believe there's any change in that line as well.
Perfect. With tents, is that something we've been using a lot this year? Are we going to bring it next year again? Or do we have...
Well, we've really narrowed it down to one school that's actually, I think, using the tents with frequency. It's for our dumpsters at Jerome Harrison. So unless I'm driving by and I'm just so used to the tents, the other buildings, we do not have tents on the campus, they're gone everywhere. It's just Jerome. So it's a local company who's been wonderful to work with, and when I started pricing these out 20 months ago, the local vendor was 50% of what others were asking for. So it's been nice to work with the person right here in North Bramford. So but we are winding down, and we're hoping by next year, these tents will be thing of the past.
All right, I don't see any other red flags here. Everything looks good.
And if you happen to see something later on, you know, fall or...
Maybe for the line item transfers, could you send them to us a few days in advance?
I can, yes.
And that way, if anybody has any questions, they can send them back to you.
Okay.
And then it might make it a smoother process.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, curriculum instruction, strategic planning. At the last board meeting, we had a lengthy presentation by Ms. Wu and a number of updates. One of the things that was a part of the focus was the high school SAT, and there was a question asked by Ms. Holzer regarding the SAT and looking at more historical data with the SAT, and our administrators went back and took the charge to give you a better picture of percentiles of students who participate, their scores over time, and from the time they enter the high school to the time they exit the high school. So I thought, and Ms. Wu thought, it would be a valuable opportunity just to spend a couple of minutes. It's only a few slides, but just to take a look at that. So that being said, I'll say, Mr. Ford is here. Rob Ford is our district English coordinator here, has been a high school teacher in North Bramford for several, several years, and actually has won numerous awards. I'm going to embarrass you a little bit now, Mr. Ford, for his efforts in the coursework, not only the coursework that he teaches, but some of his writings and things that he's brought to North Bramford. So he's here as well to kind of speak to. He does a lot of the data crunching and a lot of the analysis, not only at the high school, but through K-12 as well. So you're welcome.
Yeah, like Scott said, Rob is our, she's called DLA, coordinator of our high school kids, who we're all days he's had for several years. He really gets all the SAT, the SAT information, crushes it, he puts it in formats that the data team can kind of understand. We meet monthly, review it, and we break the data down per grade, historically, all the way down to per student, and we attack, you know, what we see there. So I think it's just important to look at our data over the last few years. You know, with the pandemic, as you know, Tracy has explained in the last couple of meetings, it's brought some unique challenges that we've never seen before. So to get a little perspective of where we've been, we went back to the last six years. The reason we did that, and Rob can explain that, 2016 was the first year of the SAT that was redesigned. So the College Board kind of redesigned the SAT and made it more common for our base. So that's where we started our data from. So, you know, we only have, we have three, six slides to look at, kind of get to the point, and Rob can really speak to the growth aspect, which I think is critical when we look at, you know, like Scott said, when our students arrive to us and then how they grow each year. So looking at the data, there's a couple of things there that we haven't talked about before. One biggest one being a super score. So what a super score is, is students who take the SAT more than once, and they take their best scores and combine it. So we know that the state reports out on the one-day test that the school's taking, and that's kind of where our report card comes from. But our students are taking it more than that just one day. So when you see the super score, those are our averages of our students that are taking the SAT, and most students are taking it more than once. That's what gets reported to colleges. And so it's a really important score. So a lot of the state doesn't allow us to report that score out. They only want that one SAT day, which this year is March 29th. I think it's important to put down where our super scores are, because they're still our kids, and they're taking, you know, they're taking that same SAT in the same year, and they're performing quite well. If you look at the com, this is left of that, that's the SAT day score over the last six years, and then last com is with that state average. So math is up top, and then English-based reading and writing is on the bottom. And as you can see, we're always right at or above state average, which is really important to note. The last couple of years due to the pandemic, you know, the state averages may be inflated in a sense, because there's many districts that didn't have a participation rate, like what we had. I mean, Tracy talked about that in her presentation. For example, New Haven had a 57% participation rate. So, you know, the less students taking the test, you know, those average scores may be inflated. But we're looking at, you know, going back over six years, you know, our scores are there. It's just, it's a good slide to look at. And we'll refer back to this slide.
Can you send those to us?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
The thing I was going to say is we'll see the last couple of years, class of 2021 and 22, that the difference between the 11th grade SAT and the super score is not all that significant compared to earlier years. And that just speaks to a trend that we're noticing. The kids just aren't taking the SAT as many times after the March SAT day. A lot of kids are just choosing to stick with their one score.
Well, some of the schools hold it against them, too.
Right.
So I mean, that is why some of them don't take it multiple times, because they, you know, they hold it against them. Have they held it against them?
Wait, no.
You're not allowed to do this. Like, you're not allowed, if you keep taking it, it's not looked upon. I mean, we just sort of... How do they know that? You submit your score. You submit your highest score.
At the admissions office at universities?
Yeah.
You get the highest documents.
Right, so they either, I didn't think that they didn't want any times you took it.
It'd be different test days on gates, maybe, or...
No, because I think, I mean, unless they've changed it.
They're only receiving the two highest scores.
Yeah, I mean, this would be where, like, Abbott and Tor, Melvall, obviously Guidance Council would be better at sort of how those scores get reported out to colleges. But I mean, I can speak to this, like, in October, only 19 seniors took the SAT again for whatever reason, so.
There was a piece in the last couple of years where colleges and universities put a lot less stress on SAT. They took it to account, and I mean, so I mean, our guidance councils would be more apt to talk to that. That's not a trend that's going to, I don't think is going to continue or evolve. But the last couple of years, universities and colleges have been much more listening to colleges, students, transfers, and kind of that, which may have played into that as well.
And many schools are optional, SAT.
That's right.
And even very competitive schools that years ago, if you weren't 1,300 or higher, you were not going to a Boston college. And now, many of these very competitive schools have made them optional.
Yeah, some schools take it easy. Some take these tests as opposed to the SAT score on some students, particularly math and science, and you're better on the A's and B's, and they might be taken after your year towards the sixth. So there's a lot of errors.
There's a lot of good places, though, to take it more than one time.
Yeah, and you can see in the past, our students typically, they do do that, and they perform better on.
Because honestly, one of my children's schools, based upon your SAT score, they gave you money every year towards your tuition.
Yep.
And for instance... And for instance, my child, whatever the score was, was like whatever E. And if they had gotten it up to the next level by 20 points, they would have got $4,000 more a year towards their tuition. And we didn't know that. Like, that wasn't something that was explained to us. And this particular child, my, went to the SAT once and felt like, well, the schools that I'm going to, I've exceeded their requirements, so I'm going to take it again. My, I'm going to take it again. I've exceeded what they require. But had we known that, I mean, if took it a second time, I would have got those 20 points and it would have made a difference. $4,000 a year towards tuition.
Yep. And again, the students are attending, you know, multiple times. It certainly kind of incentive their scoring better on it. They're prepared for the test to give reflection on our staff. But, you know, those scores are not getting reported to state. So when those reports come out, again, we're all looking at that first SAT score.
That's it now.
One question, is the participation rate for us, is it?
We're always high, above 95%.
Really?
Almost 97, 98%.
Just in this, like Tracy's slide, our presentation last week, we were like 35.
For the last few years, because of COVID, the 95, there is a 95% participation requirement in the state of Connecticut for the school day SAT. So if you don't meet that, your school is cited. So in general, 95% of every 11th grade class around the state takes it. Except for the last two years, we have been much higher because many schools, districts didn't have students in school. And there was no remote SAT allowed. Where we were in school, so many more of our students took it the last two years than others.
So yeah, scores, and I don't want to make assumptions, but, you know, the students that did opt-in the SAT, the most likely students that were conscientious in college, and they wanted those scores. There are a lot of students that did not take the SAT because they were home. There was an option. That 95% was waiting. So the scores may have been a little inflated from average scores. Take that into account.
So another footnote to that is one thing that we often do is contact families who had preschool, remote learners, or juniors to make it available then to come on and get on the SAT day, take it in the environment where they felt safe, even though they were a remote learner out of the building for the rest of school year. And that makes significant inroads of us getting to that 95%, like we've always had, even though we had kids that were out.
We set up other tests where we used to spread students out more to make sure that they felt safe. We wanted them to come in and get that experience.
And that is our philosophy, that we try to include everyone so that we are allowing them to provide themselves with opportunities to take it again, even if they're unsure whether or not they will be attending college, because we don't want any child to not provide that opportunity or choice for themselves by not taking it. And I will say that consistently throughout, but particularly the last two years, our special ed participation rate more than doubles and triples areas of ours.
So, we'll refer back to this slide again. We also want to look at cohort trend data, which I think is fairly important because, you know, these are students in our current 11th graders, how they perform when they were in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Our current 10th graders, we look at how they perform in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. While it's not the sole predictor of how they're going to do on the SAT, it's important that we have that historical data of each class, because each class performs differently. So, you know, Rob gets the data from the eighth grade, it comes in, we break it down, and then we plan to attack based on some of the needs that we see. Where some of the skills are strong, where some of the skills are some areas of weakness that we need to improve on, we go and attack that. If you look at the 11th grade, scores were pretty good. And the PSAT data that we got back a little while ago, and we're still kind of, and we're still breaking it down. But the PSAT data for our 11th grade right now is very promising. It looks good. Which is, which would match how they performed in middle school. The PSAT data in the 10th grade is kind of reflective of their as well. So not, they didn't, it's not as promising. So, you know, that, it gives us a lot of insight on where students, how they're performing historically as a group from sixth grade on. And, you know, we really have the data from third grade on to look at how these classes are performing. And again, it just gives us, and our ninth grade teachers are getting specific data from the eighth grade teachers. We have that kind of vertical collaboration going, so they know students and administrative staff where they're at. So not the sole predictor, but it's still important to know, you know, how students perform historically as a class over time. And then this is something that I really wanted Rob to be here to talk about too, because, you know, I think our philosophy as educators was always growth. We always believed, you know, students arrive wherever they're at. Our goal is to make them stronger and make them better. So we look at how students are performing and growth. So Rob, can you speak to, you know, College Board growth report?
Yes, this is what it looks like. I think Greg will click that link. But basically what the College Board will do is it generates a report for us of the students who in ninth, 10th, 11th, and then again for the SAT, they were here with us, they were present, they took the test. And they can track birth for those students. So it's a fair kind of tracking. So we don't, they're basically taking all the absent students out. So you can see when you look at this that, that yes, fall 2019 to fall 2020, so the pandemic hits March 2020, we're out of school for three months. We come back for one month. So that span of time, we didn't see the growth that we normally would see, for sure, but if you look at the other areas we meet and exceed, in most cases, we meet or exceed the benchmark expectations. So the report shows the benchmarks all the way to the right, if you're looking at it, for what the expectation is for reading and then for math. And it just goes from, you know, fall of the freshman year, fall of the sophomore year, fall of the junior year, then the actual SAT day. You know, again, we were affected by the pandemic, because you can see that we had 122 test takers in freshman year, 121 test takers in the sophomore year, and then 107 in the fall of the junior year, which is again, we just got back into school and we had kids remote, we had kids out of quarantine. So that unfortunately affects the number of kids that can get into this report. So 90 out of 122 kids are what we are in the report. But still, I think it's a nice indicator of the fact that when kids are with us, when they're present, when they're in school, they are, they are doing what we want them to do in terms of their growth.
So if you, if you want to just, you know, just have a question on that, Rob. Are the benchmarks pretty much staying like they stay stagnant year over year, year to the clutch week?
So, yes, it's a standard number. So for evidence-based reading and writing, it starts at 410, goes to 430, then 460, then 480. So we're looking for 480 as a junior, at the spring of the junior year. It's slightly higher for math. The way the College Board does it is they've done their own studies to determine how would a student, what grade would a student need to get in the freshman year in an entry-level class to be successful in college and career-ready? And they sort of track it back to what were their SAT scores. And they, they judge it as a C or higher. So a C or higher in an English class, first-year writing English class equates to roughly a 480, according to their studies. And then for math, it's 530. So it is higher. And that's, that's one reason why, from a percentage perspective, why evidence-based reading benchmark percentage is consistently higher than math percentage. It's just a higher score to achieve.
So if you go back, I mean, historically speaking, if you look at it from, if you just go from the left to the right, you can see each year our students are performing. They're meeting that growth target that Rob just talked about. So that's really, you know, an important piece to know too, because students are coming in and each year we are seeing improvement in their 1st grade SAT. And, I mean, you know, we know we have the action plans that Tracy's going to talk about next. You know, this pandemic, it was the most serious disruption to students' education probably ever. So Rob is really a master of projections and that's what he's been doing. He's projecting, you can see, you know, we're relieved and kids, and he daily is, yeah, encouraging. But, you know, we have to take into account that seriousness of the last year and a half. We don't know what the effect of that may be for a little while. What we do know is we have, all, I think, the entire administrative team across the district has really targeted specifically for that, we saw that in the action plans. And that's what we're focused on, Christian. And again, we're, you know, keeping Michael that throughout the year. So, you know, I just thought, you know, we wanted just a quick opportunity to show you this. So, you know, if you're new to the board, where the question was, you know, historically, you know, this can't be where we're normally at. It's not. But we're at the most abnormal time that we've seen it, so.
This is a reinforced... Yeah, it's what Greg said too about, like, the projection for the current junior class is really promising. It looks like we're going to be at pre-pandemic levels for that particular cohort, so that considering everything that we've gone through, when we saw that projection, we were really, really happy. And I'd mentioned to Tracy too, the freshman scores for math are much higher than they've been in recent years. So, but that, our biggest concern is with the sophomore group because they've historically been in a lower situation. So that's what we've really been, like, focusing our...
And this is the same group that when they were in middle school, when we were, you know, identified as a school risk, was now
Right, it was that class.
Tracked through the fourth year, so they're working in that.
So what do we offer them? I know there's one elective you can take for SAT prep. But say if you take that, which my son did, took it his sophomore year. So it's been a year since he took that elective and now he took, you know, the PSAT again as well. But he's going to be taking a class, we're going to do it privately, but like, what are we doing to help the kids? I mean, you take one elective.
So it's embedded, and I'll let you speak to some of the SAT parts that we do with flex and everything else.
Well, again, you know, when we talk about the SAT being redesigned, it's redesigned because, you know, what's happening in core academic classes is aligned to what students are going to be seeing on the SAT. It's common core aligned. So there is just, in curriculum, in the core academic areas, you know, there's a lot of, you know, SAT prep essentially without it being, you know, velocityized, okay, SAT direct instruction. We do have a PSAT, SAT elective, which has been successful. We do have flex time now where students are getting interventions on a variety of different areas. And we're adding a reading lab next year. So we have a, we're adding a reading lab. We have a literacy lab this year, science lab, executive functioning lab, math lab. Next year, we're going to have the writing lab. So, you know, that's a focused area that because of the flex time that we talked about, I think a couple of weeks ago, we can get any student into that now. Before, we were really, you know, hands-free on schedule. We can get any student in there now. We're going to be offering some SAT tips and strategies for all juniors, leaving up to the SAT during flex time, now that, you know, everyone has flex time. We're going to offer some of those strategies. We're working collaboratively as teams and departments are working to share strategies that they're seeing successful. We are changing the way that we track our data in our labs, working with Heather Porta from, for the district. But, you know, the way that Rob is tracking the data with our lab teachers, we're just changing the way that we kind of track it to be more specific. We met this week as a data team. And we're breaking down to students, individual students, we're really seeing, you know, a group of students that are low, a group of students that are approaching the benchmark, students that are exceeding the benchmark. Our goal is to keep those students exceeding where they are and then target the students that are really just approaching. And I think, you know, our size, our enrollment, five or six students that are almost there, getting those six, seven students forward makes a really noticeable difference in our percentages. So, I mean, we're just, we're doing a lot of things that we normally do. You can see through the last, you know, if you have success here. We are successful. This is a unique year, so we're changing some ways to attack it to meet those needs in many different formats. I might just want to add that.
I know that Tracy's going to speak to some of the action plan items, so this might come up with that too. But when the data team met on the 10th of December, the biggest thing we did is we took, like, actual, so this is like the average scores, but we identify names of students in each grade who are really close to benchmark. And we say, and we put them on a list and we give it to all of the department leaders and we say, let's identify which kids would benefit from intervention, which type of intervention would they benefit from the north shift? Is it a lab environment? Is it a PSAT, SAT prep class? Is it a quick, we're going to pull you in for a couple of months before the SAT hit it in flex? So that's all the kind of conversations that are happening right now with that list of students, especially the juniors. Because we know those are ones that we have to hit right before March. We also do an analysis, what we call the question analysis report, which we can look at every single question on the PSAT that was given and look for trends in terms of performance. So we noticed, for example, our students are struggling with like standard English conventions, punctuation. It's a really big thing that we can, in English department, do right before they take the PSAT, which we plan to, we typically do that anyway, but it was like a real reinforcement of like, yes, this is something that we can really, like, a quick hitting thing. We also noticed that they struggled with questions related to analysis and science. So we, you know, talked to Megan Redmond, Ryan DeBrowski, the Department Director for Science, and said, this is something you need to be aware of. Now, those sorts of things change year over year, but, you know, it's, that's a really powerful tool to be able to say to exclude the teachers focused on this skill. You know, to have that capability kind of there.
And that is a very nice segue into the update of the action plans. Because what I'm going to speak to this evening really is about what we have done for the, what these action plans are built on is addressing students' needs. So when we were charged and the building administrators, myself, their teams, all went back and started looking at what do we, what needs to happen in our buildings to help students move forward? And the truth is, they all need individual intervention or individualized learning, which obviously research well shows that this is exactly what schools should be doing. But before this year, for many of the buildings and many of the departments, it's been unrealistic. With the addition of flex time in the schedule at the high school, now they have a vehicle, as they mentioned, to make sure every kid receives the services that they need. So for instance, students in the math lab and the reading lab, before, if you didn't have a study hall while the person that was teaching the lab was teaching it, you could not attend. Now, we can make those recommendations and referrals in real time. Meaning if one, you get this PSAT data, because everyone in the building is available for that same period of time, we can, if we need to make three labs of various content to make sure students get it. And as we go on, those things will become more targeted and more specific. So we will have one for ninth graders, for 10th graders. Particularly with math, much of, the biggest jump in math is between junior, sophomore and junior year, and really between junior PSAT and the junior spring school day SAT. Because that's algebra two and there's a large set of discrete skills and content that students don't see until then. So it's tested on the PSAT, but students haven't even had the opportunity to learn it yet. So we are then able to start to address those kids differently than we would the sophomores or the freshmen. So in each of the updates, and when we look through it, the focus is that response to intervention. Whether it be students electing to take an SAT course or us enrolling them in labs with the recommendations of teachers as well as academic achievement data. In the elementary schools, we are starting three-step processes. So at Jerome, it's a three-step inquiry process that the PLCs are going through, which is actually a data process where we look at student success or areas in need of improvement. We design strategies as teachers in professional learning communities that we believe will work. We then have them go through this and then on the next assessment, see how the students are doing. And really look to target to see which students are responding to which interventions and which strategies are most appropriate. And then we have, obviously, those that don't succeed, we try additional strategies with. But while we're doing all this, and really is the push of state of Connecticut, is that you still need to move forward. So these students need to be addressed during these special times, whether it be RTI or elementary schools or flex. And that's what these action plans speak to right now. This is new. The way we're doing it is new. So really, it's about establishing these RTI structures. For the first time ever, we have someone who's specifically working to help the buildings develop those structures and make sure the district has a sequential comprehensive system of response to intervention pre-K to 12. And that is Heather Porta. She is through her position, she's a former special ed teacher in the district. And she is in this position based on one of the grants in which accelerated learning was one of the priorities that the state had set forth. So it is her position to integrate herself with each of the, to integrate herself with each of the data teams and look how she can help them most efficiently determine students' needs and address them. So as I mentioned, Jerome and TBS are, and TBS is doing a three-question PLC protocol where they're asking questions within their professional learning communities. Jerome is doing the same thing, but it is in the, in the vehicle in form of a three-step inquiry protocol. The high school and middle school both have their own inquiry protocols that they engage in. And it's all about trapping these students and seeing what works and doesn't work. For example, in the latest data meeting at the high school, Heather and I were present and their team was talking about what happens to students before they enter lab, as they test at the end of the lab, and then after the lab. And we did start to see that some of the students, after they're done with lab support for the quarter, and they've scored well enough to move on and to be out of that and do some of their own... be out of that and do some of their own choice activities during flex, that sometimes the scores start to slip. So, and that is most common in special education students, which is not, I would think, it really doesn't shock any of us to understand that. So the conversations we start to have are things like, okay, so what is the collaboration that happens between the resource special ed teacher and the lab teacher to talk about that child specific and what strategies worked? So then that resource teacher can now start to integrate those strategies into the work the resource teacher is doing with the student to complete work. So not only about teaching the strategy, but now about using it in every day. So those are, in each of the buildings, that is the main work being done right now. So in every building, we're also doing observations and professional development to make sure all the things that we're talking about are happening. But most importantly, it's about reading these structures because they are new, and even where they existed in some way, they are very different. So what we will be doing, and it will be more formal moving forward as we start to talk about a structure, and once mid-year benchmarks are in, which is next month, we'll have a different type of update. But I will be able to address specific cells within the updates and then within the action plans. And once we figure out exactly what that looks like and how detailed they're going to be, then we'll do presentations on it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, my question is, if you say it's fair to say that those these action plans are for people who, for the students that are below or just about benchmark, or is it?
Action plans are about, so the goal of an action plan, whether it is specifically defined that way, is to improve student achievement, period. So, yes, do we, do we tend to make a more differentiated version of supports for students that are below grade level? We do. And sometimes that's legally our responsibility when it comes to special education. And quite honestly, even response to intervention, which is for, usually for your general education students, is a requirement by law. Anything past seventh grade is a plan. We're split as a success plan, and we go from there. But no, it's more than that. So with flex, we are allowed to also have the students that are above grade level grouped together. So I would say, so when I look at some of the great things that teachers love the most in their content area, with the shift in change in standards and shifts from grade level, that doesn't always get to happen in their course anymore. So for instance, general, the next generation science standards does not cover the standards that would be manifested in hatching chickens. But it's a great experiment. It obviously lends itself to quite a few things, including genetics in middle school science. So, but for students that aren't able to meet the minimum benchmarks of science, that's really not something they need to focus on. But for your students that are already there, they are going to a teacher's classroom during that flex or intervention time, and that is what they're focusing on. So they're being able to expand and enhance their experiences and choose, quite honestly, independent projects. So one of those things, and I'm actually Jen Tetso leads the capstone project at high school. She's going to present during my, a brief presentation during my segment of the meeting next month, to show you at the high school, all seniors are required to do a capstone. It is a graduation requirement that will eventually manifest into a performance assessment that the state requires. But it's choice. And how sophisticated their projects are, how complex the work they do within that, really is based on their own level. So she'll be here next week to explain some of that. And eventually, that is the goal, to move through every grade. And we obviously started with our most mature.
Right.
Because when it comes to self-choice and self-directed learning, it is best, obviously, if students have maturity level that allows them to understand the seriousness and the importance of it.
Thank you.
So it is for everyone, but there, we absolutely do have more differentiated supports for the students that are below level.
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at everything. We heard in the concrete thing that we talked about fun, meaning I had a home dinner discussion with Mrs. Moon in this stadium, a department chair for math. And typically, what comes working to me, we always get them to offer Algebra One daily. If you go to the high school, last meet every other day. You heard Mrs. Moon speak about the rivers of the math piece on the SAT and the benchmark being so high. We're starting a preliminary discussion. What, what would it look like if we do it? Does staff that exists, so no cost to anyone, if sometime during the school year, we use the same staff to have Algebra II daily? In addition, different times of the year, Algebra I daily, because that SAT comes up at junior year. That would impact every single junior, whether they're on honors level, or general level, college prep level, that could be impactful, helping kids get ready for that SAT. So there's no stone unturned. That's a real complicated example of how we might help every single kid.
So those are discussions that we're in, and obviously, those discussions then become, what are the costs? What are the implications for students? So by keeping the number of credits between Algebra I, geometry and Algebra II the same, staffing would not be the issue. So we are, again, very preliminary. But we are having these discussions because the truth is, if we could do freshmen a credit and a half, meaning they go one half of the year every day, right now they go every day for the full year, and for Algebra II, have those students meet every day for the first half of the year, and then every other day for the second half, they would get a much more of the content of Algebra II, which the heart of Algebra is the focus of SAT. I wouldn't say majority, but it is a large focus of the SAT math, and they would have the opportunity to do it there. And we have found through item analysis that some of our highest achieving students who take Algebra I in the elementary, in the middle school, are having difficulty on some of the questions that are solely housed in Algebra I. The topics that are solely housed in Algebra I, if you haven't taken it since eighth grade year, they're losing. So we are looking at ways to address those. So again, we're looking at student data and creative ways to help students based on the data.
Okay, we will send the PowerPoint out too. If you have any questions from any of the PowerPoint information or anything that was discussed, just send that back. I want to thank Mr. Ford for being here tonight and presenting. I hope it was informative and helpful for you, and we'll go from there. Obviously, moving on to the Board agenda, our COVID update, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. Our current numbers, to date, we've had five positive cases for staff, 58 for students. I mean, weekly, with the COVID team in the district and East Shore Health and Emergency Services, and we talk about trends and where we're at and what we're doing. And our administrators and our nurses have done a wonderful job working with the new guidelines and keeping students in school based upon the new guidelines, making sure that we only quarantine when we absolutely have to. And we're still keeping with our safety protocols to minimize those numbers. So that's going well. The Auger House invitations have been set for Monday. I hope you'll be able to attend on the 20th at 10:30. We're really proud of everything that John Florio, Franny Marola, the team, Bob Drow have worked really hard with, in collaboration with getting that to be a state-of-the-art special education setup for our 18 to 22-year-olds. It's absolutely gorgeous. When you drive by at night tonight, take a look at it. It's decorated, it's lit up. It's something we can all be very proud of, and we can't wait to cut the ribbon on Monday. Legal services, we're not going to discuss tonight. That's something that we're continuing to investigate. And as we get more into the budget season, we'll talk about that. There are no town manager pending requests, other than I'll tell you, we paved 27 spots in front of the high school where we had to move cars from the intermediate school because we're moving some fencing. That was part of the process to do some underground work for electrical and sewer setup. So we knew this was going to be coming. There was a great collaboration with our, with Franny and Public Works, again, to work with our administration, the middle of the high school, to make sure that we had safe places for the faculty to park and get into our buildings, and it worked out really well. So kudos to everyone for their efforts.
Sure. On a legal service, when's the deadline?
There is no deadline.
We have attorneys on staff.
Right?
We have them on staff, yes.
But the idea is to consult?
Yes.
So there's no deadline.
So there is no deadline.
I didn't know if we had a contract.
No.
With the parking lot, with the new paving, I noticed in the student parking lot that we have lost some spots, I guess, so they're all on the grass, like along the fence. Is that something we should pave, or we just, you know, let them park in the grass? I don't know, like.
Yeah, I'm not going to get it.
They did put some process down to even it out in that part.
Okay.
So there is a process. Those are just some new spots for students to park there. You know, just get some additional parking, try to help them out.
Yeah. I mean, I don't blame them for parking on the grass. I mean, they can't get it, so...
It's a proof that they can do that.
Yeah, I know.
We worked with, and Franny on that, to make sure that it was okay, it was evened out. The old town, the camp, our building should be pulled in as early as possible as possible.
Right.
Right. So we're working with the fire marshal as well, because obviously, we have parking capacity based on the size of the building and the number. So we're dealing with all of that. But we're doing what we can to accommodate as many as we can. So renovation project is going well. We're ahead of schedule. We have seen a lot of the concrete poured. We reported on that. Now, segue over to Beth, if there's anything that you want to share.
No. No, for these windows, especially for the wall scene, it's going very well. We have some very lively conversations and arguments.
That's an understatement, but I understand that word, lively.
But it's all, you are saving the town money, you can add on the wise list, and you're coming out with a good supply of high schools.
And I want, I want to thank the committee for going back to the council when they see something that we need to do for the long term that may cost a little bit more. But with a project of this magnitude, we don't want to shortcut anything because we know what happens with the roof when you get a poor design, and then we have to go back and put money into it. So we're trying to avoid that.
I guess we can thank the North Branford Intermediate School Project for showing us, showing us what we don't want to do here.
Here are our ways.
Exactly. We're not making the same mistakes twice.
Do it right one time.
That's what jars of peace.
Yeah, do it right.
Right.
Yeah. And we'll fix MBIs. All right. Thank you. Committee reports, I'll turn that over to see what we have for reports.
Nothing for negotiations, right? We're done with everything till the fall.
Done with everything.
Well, we'll probably start in August for the teachers, July or August.
Right.
Right? That's our next for teachers.
Yep.
Budget and operations, no meeting. Curriculum, we had it tonight. Pension, no meeting. Policy, no meeting. ACES.
ACES did have a meeting, but I did not attend.
Okay. Thank you. Building committee, we just took care of. Communication, no meeting. Any new business?
Should we take out the curriculum instructions thing if it's going to be part of this main board meeting? We really don't need to have it there.
It was asked, and I think it might have been drawn during a discussion, that we should leave it just in case there's something that would take up a little too much time of this meeting, and you would want to meet separately for it.
That's fine, totally fine. New business, there's nothing. Visitors are press. Go to the board. Anybody have anything to say?
I mean, I just went by the Auger House. I go by every day and drop my stuff at Jerome. It looks wonderful. So I just want to comment how, I think it really was impressive looking, and it's nice that the building's used. And I'm looking forward to the kids being in the building, so, or young adults being in the building.
Absolutely.
Not really kids anymore, so.
The schools are very busy. I read the briefs. They're very busy. Kudos to all the schools for keeping as many things going as we have going, considering pandemic and everything else. And the fundraisers that they did were amazing. Thank you, guys. I hope everybody has a nice holiday. Safe and healthy holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. So the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 20th, 2022. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Oh, motion to adjourn, sorry.
Jen and Beth, give her what we want, first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Thanks, everyone.